Twenty twenty three and the planning board of the township of Pittsburgh will now come to order. We have a forum, welcome everyone, welcome fellow board members, they could have you here. We have an agenda in front of you and I'll entertain a motion to either approve the agenda or to modify the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'm on my second.
Thank you, Charity, thank you, Rita. All in favor of adopting the agenda? Aye, aye, all opposed? The agenda is approved. We come to our public comment period and I think Molly, I see you taking signups.
Yes, we got a couple people there, they've signed up to speak about specific items, so after we do the staff analyses for those, I'll let you know we have public comments.
Very good, thank you. So we will move on now to the minutes of our meeting of July seventeenth. And I'll entertain a motion to either approve and accept or to modify the minutes. Any corrections or modifications needed to the minutes of our last meeting? On being offered, we will move to accept those minutes.
I'm sure that we accept the minutes.
Thank you, Rita, second, thank you, Carl, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved for July seventeenth. Coming to old business, we at our last meeting had talked about the applications received for the two planning board positions, these are the auxiliary positions. And we had some, some very fine applicants. And one of the things that concerned me was that those who would apply were told we had a meeting that began at six thirty and of course we began at six, which might have been a problem for some of them to work. So we kept it open for a, for another month and I think we're ready to see who's giving me a wink.
Yes, since we hadn't collected all of the votes until now, it's going to take us a little bit longer to count them, so we're just going to reschedule them a little later down the line, if that's okay.
So we'll come back then, that's item six A. Let's move on to six B, which is the Reeves Farm conditional rezoning request and our planning director had an update on that matter.
I do, I appreciate y'all being here this evening, I appreciate this huge crowd, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but we have a lot of visitors tonight, I did I did actually take a look at the application, I listened to last time's presentation and the only recommendation I wish to add to what is in front of you all and I certainly would welcome my, my other applicant folks to come up and join me in a minute and speak to you on the item. But there is a list of conditions and waivers that are at the back of the application. Number one, in terms of a waiver is a request to reduce the side setback for residential single family lots from the required for this particular district, seven point five feet to three point five feet. I did want to point out that I'm recommending against approving this particular condition. However, let me go, let me go to the end first, then I'm gonna come back to where I was going to go. I do recommend every other change that they have asked for. The height one isn't a problem for me, nothing else that I read is a problem. This particular piece has to do with fire safety and I personally believe that the side setback of seven point five feet is appropriate. What I am willing to certainly discuss, and I would definitely love to hear from the petitioner on this particular piece, I would like to reserve the right for them to come back at another time when they are developing, we're not looking at looking at Jody, elements, elements is it? Whatever those multi-colored pieces are, we're not looking at those, we're looking at a specific site plan. It's my belief that it's possible to have a relaxed or a tighter, I don't know, can you relax while tightening? But anyway, I'd like to have a tighter side setback being an option, I just don't see it across the board. So I've been working with him and his team on trying to get this particular detail worked out, but at press time, this is kind of where we are, I don't love the three point five as a straight across the board. I do think there's an opportunity to come back and discuss it as maybe an amendment or something to that effect.
Alright.
And I'll yield the floor to, I'm sorry, come on up, yeah, don't be shy.
You couldn't, okay.
But, um, my name is Jody Lightoff, I'm at four eight Mountain Trace, Temple Hill, applicant for the Reeves Farm. You know, last time we had a full presentation, I have the presentation reloaded if we wanted to go through it, or if you want to do more of a question and answer, I'm available either way. With regards to the setbacks, yes, we, we have been in a lot of discussions with Randy and the team and the town staff regarding setbacks. In the neighborhood mixed use center district, it was presumed that the, you know, commercial mixed use, it's a seven foot five, seven foot six setback across the board, so whether it's commercial buildings, whether it's multifamily, whether it's townhouse, it was, it was agnostic as, as towards the use. And what we're proposing is, we'd like to do more of a graded scale, in some ways we increase the setbacks and we're willing to do that in commercial areas, alleys, in between commercial buildings to go to a broader, so you can get a twenty foot alley between those, but on a residential setback of lots forty feet and below, thirty feet and below, we feel that the side yard setback, the three foot minimum is appropriate. It's been a precedent in most of the recent rezonings that have come through to the town as a reduction. It is building code minimum and it's innocent, it's been applied in multiple jurisdictions, whether it's Wendell Falls and Wendell, North Carolina, whether it's Briar Chapel, whether it's Chatham Park. And so we, we want to continue the discussions with the planning staff on kind of regulating the side yards appropriate to scale sides of house and use. And so we're not saying no, we're saying we'd like to be able to get into that more specifically with each site plan and how it applies to streetscape. We do believe, in my experience of developing communities in the past, density is key and it's one way, there's a, and I will just put the cards on the table, I've been involved in Briar Chapel since two thousand seven. We were able to offer the least expensive, single family detached home in the market and that was only because of the compact community ordinance and allowing the density. And that was, we met a need in affordability, we also were able to leverage that to preserve open space by reducing the side yard setbacks and getting tighter within that. So there's benefits both ways, economically, open space and just character, streetscape and presentation in the public realm, so ongoing, you know, so that's all I'd say to that. And any other questions?
More members questions?
Jody has a chart, which he did share with me, but we didn't print it out, it wasn't included in tonight's packet. But he did illustrate some of the ways we could work this particular thing, again, it just really wasn't written.
We just want to build a nice community.
Right.
And part of that is the subtleties and inches matter, percentages, setbacks, that all goes into presenting a good community.
I have a couple questions.
Yes.
One, the archaeology, you know, we study that area of Krista.
Yeah, so we reached out to Si two times, we have calls into him, but he never returned them.
I'll get back to him, I'm sure that he gets back to you.
Yeah.
Business card.
Yeah, so we, we made, from the last meeting, we did make those calls and try to make that connection.
I guess what I'm asking, Chatham Park, to their credit, has stepped up and provided a company and I don't have their name, I didn't write it down. It actually looks for historical, now I don't know if that area is quite as historic and Chatham Park is so massive and huge.
Right.
Like some sort of insurance is on this cover, something happened.
Yeah, so we're, we're glad to, whatever, we did a phase one study that looked at all the historic records. And we know, you know, there's probably an old homestead out there, what remains, you know, whether it's just the foundation for the chimney or not, but, and we do know of one historic wall that's on the kind of southeastern border that we will work to the top. And, you know, we, we, we've made our inroads into the community, trying to ferret out what other historic objects would be.
I just want to make sure we did it in the record.
Yeah.
Is there any interest in purchasing other land, I had a person call me and ask on your part, other than the five hundred acres of we're addressing today?
There is interest. We have talked to several adjoiners and one is just looking holistically at the west side of Pittsburgh, right? I mean, not a lot of studies have been done on the west side. So are there opportunities to make further road connections, how do we, like our neighbor to the north, you know, how do we work with them since we own, you know, fourteen acres right there and we could provide them the primary access so they don't have to cross Robertson Creek, so they've been more than willing to engage in conversations with us. And to the south, there's eighty acres that we've talked to about, you know, is there a potential ever to cross Robertson Creek to make that connection, Talston Chapel Road, so? Yes. Sorry.
Thank you.
Just one, you know, we're excited about it, probably say too much.
Charity, do you have a question?
I did, I just wanted to ask about the three and a half feet, it's for a single family dwelling, it would be like townhouse.
Right, so even, you know, if you look through the neighborhood mixed use center district, the side yard for a townhome, it's seven foot six, it's blanket across the board, and so in my chart, I'm offering to make that side yard for a townhome, ten feet, right? Just corner condition, visibility, ease of access, view shed triangles, et cetera. And just, you know, a little bit nicer separation between townhomes, so we were really driving at three foot six for lots forty feet and below so that you could get a little tighter and six feet with building code being three feet, you know, we added an extra foot thinking of ease and proper architecture and classical detailing.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Board members, any other questions, any discussion? I, yes, Eric. At the last meeting, we, we really sort of barely got into this because of the magnitude of all the, all the maps and the detail they had. And and I had some conversation with staff subsequent to that, so I'm still a little confused where, where it stands, you know, sort of procedurally, but however that goes or irrelevant of how that goes, there are a number of items in here that we never got to at the last meeting. I'm just gonna hone in on the table of uses, which in our packet would be pages ten or thirteen. And I'm gonna, I'm just gonna hit these for now, although I have other questions about the layout, stream crossings, the road access, you know, depending on where we go, but there's a number of uses in here that they have with their rezoning as permitted uses that I don't think are appropriate with the assumption that they're going to be permitted uses throughout the tract. One would be outdoor entertainment recreation facility. One is hotel motel, one is mini storage, one is brewery. And without having some semblance of setbacks to especially the properties that front this on the west, you understand, so you know, having said that, knowing nothing else coming forward, I would be inclined to deny this as it sits right. Okay. Okay. And this, this may take care of it right now.
Maybe, that was certainly while we're bringing this up on the screen, I was going to point out that one of the centerpieces of the conversation we had in between time had to do with annexation and a developer's agreement. Because of the requirements to provide utilities within a year of annexation, are the developer's agreement that we're filed of jointly forming as part of this particular piece, there will be checkpoints at which annexation is supposed to be taking place of individual pieces of the land, somewhat similar to Chatham Park, I'm sorry, this is the part where you get the dive in.
No, and I was waiting for the character districts to come up because that's what really controls where the items go, right? And, yeah, I think it's, there we go.
In all, one second.
You keep flipping.
Yeah.
Where do we want to go?
Oh, oh.
Right there?
Yes. So in our, if you look at the future land use plan for the town of Pittsburgh, right, there was a mixed use node shown at the corner where the dark purple is. And then there was a transition to neighborhood infill and then conservation subdivision, so in essence, there's like three to four colors of land use map that we've just taken our roadway framework and then massaged those kind of land use ideals that were in the future land use plan to meet the roadway framework. So what we did is, in the next sheet, if you just code it, so we'll flip back and forth, but this chart right here is really what's important. And this is what establishes what can go where.
Forgive me.
Yep, no, you're perfect, you're, yeah. So as you can see in this graphic, the light is pink, we've only allowed four hundred and ten homes in that light peak, so any of the kind of prescribed land uses that we've asked for that are in additions to what would have been allowed cannot occur in the light peak, they can't occur in the second MAF in the character districts, three B. What we're saying is those can only go in either a four A or a four B zone. So it's the ideal of creating that neighborhood mixed use center that has all elements in it in the darkest purple, so that's where all the uses could go. The next step out is we're going to start to regulate what can go outside of the dark purple and what uses could occur there. And then that begins to filter out to the edges and the environmental framework and that's what gets you the three A designation of single family only. Now, we have shown pockets of townhomes within that C A district and that's the ideal of density needs to be where open space is, so if you create that civic node that parked in the middle of a community, that's the offset for choice of living in a smaller unit, you have quicker access to open space. And so what we've tried to do is take the, the ideals of the land use plan and massage it to meet the environmental framework and the roadway framework and the ideals that we've put forward as far as the view shed corridor along sixty four. And what can you're where, so while there's a lot of uses kind of woven into our request, there's only certain areas that those can go and what we've tried to do is regulate that and show you that by our planning and our thought process, the kind of adjoining properties, the Robertson Creeks, we've been very respective and releasing the density and loosen the uses as it gets closer.
I have a question about retail services.
Yes.
What, um, service is like, what kind of a business would that?
Yeah, I mean, we had a woman that spoke of a tattoo parlor here last time, they couldn't go into downtown. But it could be banking, insurance, financial lawyers, it could be a window salesman, you know, a window company, you know, there's a variety of uses. You know, if you think about nail salons, you know, take a look at mosaic and kind of what's seated there as the original kind of retail mix. You know, you've got Jersey Mike's, you've got a people's coffee that's soon to be open. But, you know, nail salon, insurance, financial services. So that's a good example of kind of ground, ground for mixed use retail, you know, early adopters that will come in and make plays. And that's part of, we've also had a long discussion with staff and Janie brought this up at our original meeting and the development agreement, you know, guarantee the mix and mixed use, right, you're asking for a neighborhood mixed use, it can all be residential and we need some specificity on timing of that mixed use and we're going to work through that with the development agreement and time that, so there are walkable neighborhood uses close by. And that, you know, the goal, again, the whole goal of this project is to make that center node and that walkability, you know, basically five hamlets, five little neighborhoods working together that have the access and ability to walk.
Any further questions or discussion? I, I need to go back to staff now, so about ten years ago, we, the board got caught with our pants down, so to speak, at Powell Place when we had a rezone, it was an M U P D and there were some concept maps much like we're looking at here. But we were told that that's all they were. And when the senior facility came in in a place that did not match the maps from some years prior, we were told nothing we could do about. So my, my question to you, Randy, is maybe, maybe the U D O has, has changed this, but does this you know, do these maps define a regulatory sort of definition of what this project will be? Because if not, that hotel, that outdoor entertainment district can go on the west property line. If we, if we don't have that definition clear right now. Does that make sense, Mr. Messick?
Yes, but I thought this was conceptual.
So conceptual means that's what they're showing us, but that, that may not necessarily come that way, is that correct?
Well, this is not a site specific development plan and that'll come later with, you know, a subdivision or, or requests that will specifically identify where the locations are. I don't know that there's a condition that addresses that particular question.
I, I, I don't think there are conditions, are there? Not that particular.
From, from the Reeves Farm Pittsburgh point of view, we've filed the character district chart and we filed the character district map and the environmental framework says the recorded documents that go to the town that says this is our intention of this is what we want to build. The illustrative such as this was to answer, you know, there's always a question of what does it look like, you know, we're going in the public realm, we're trying to create community. Give us an idea of your thought process and what's behind creating community, neighborhoods, hamlets, block streets, right? I mean, that's really what's important is the house street block and how that functions and then the respect of the environmental open space. So when we submitted our application, we put in the character districts and we put this chart that says, if it's in pink, nothing else can be built except for a single family detached homes. And that was the intent of our application is to define that for you, Carl.
And this is no disrespect to you at all, because this, you know, represents a lot of work. We were told something exactly like that twelve years ago. And when it came to things going on the ground, we were told, we're too bad.
Right.
So out of respect for the neighbors, I think we need to be very clear on this.
Right, and that, that was our intention of setting out the four character districts and describing the uses that could occur and what could happen to the neighbors, we filed and are recorded with this, I have single family and townhomes, the four A can have a little bit more mix and then the four B is where everything can go because that creates place and if, you know, if you go through the future land use plan, if you read through the actual intro to the neighborhood mixed use center district, it's what it describes and that's really, you know, in my mind, if you read the U D O and you read the one page neighborhood mixed use center district, it's trying to just describe this kind of complex system of creating joining uses and we said, perfect, we get that, mixed you know, should have all that. But from there, let's soften the density and the uses and get to character districts. And so that's where, and, and, and our intent has always been leverage the character districts as a defining document that town staff can look at when a site plan comes in and says, this use is appropriate in this district.
The cloud's conditions are on the screen right now, but which is the one in front of you and one here?
And there's more conditions, so whenever you want me to move down.
We have those in our packet too.
Yes.
Yes, it's a natural application, it should be on the next last page.
And I may have confused things with the presentation, but I really wanted to take you through the kind of legislative portions, which is character districts and then the illustrative portions of the thought and the ideals and how this community would evolve, you know, again.
Very helpful.
And especially the view shed quarter on sixty four, you know, that's something that people drive every day, right? They've lived it, they loved it, they love looking at that pond, we're preserving that view shed, creating the open space and the greenway trails along that, pulling the density just far enough away that, you know, it's not, it still can function and it's still strong retail.
After looking this, do you have anything?
We do have two people who signed up to speak if you'd like to hear them. All right, first, we have Rachel Lindsay Wisebecker, if you come to the front. And Rachel, if you just state your name and your address, I'll time you for three minutes and if you're about to cross it, I'll, I'll gently remind you. Sure, so I'm Rachel Lindsay Wisebecker, but everybody calls me Davis, so, um, do I need to say my address or something?
If you would, yeah. Well, on the map, I live about two houses down in that neighborhood on the west side, ninety nine Reeves Road. Um, I think, I'll just say first, I don't speak for all my neighbors because I think I'm the only person in the neighborhood I've heard say anything positive about this. Um, and I am generally supportive because deep down I really support dense development closer to the town center, I think it's what is good for the community, I think it's better for the environment. But I have a lot of, now I have three areas of representation, think, but I think they map to what the gentleman was saying around, I think there's a lot of good things in this presentation and what's being said about contributing to the public realm and wanting people to look back and say this was a win-win, but if it's not on paper, my understanding, or if it's not in the U D O at the time of the rezoning, they're not really held to that and I don't know all the ins and outs, so maybe that's something that can be cleared up and, and help prevent rumors that I might be spreading, but, um, I think my three big priority areas and where my comments lie are around affordable housing, protecting the natural resources that are on that property and creating connected, walkable, bikeable neighborhoods. I think I went to the community meeting and asked about affordable housing and I think similar to what we heard in the presentation, this idea of like the model where we provide missing middle housing. I think it makes sense, but it doesn't actually work in practice from what we've seen, at least not in this area, things that maybe started affordable are, especially for workforce housing, low income housing. And I think what people love about Pittsburgh is how sort of vibrant and diverse it is and that's, that's racial diversity, but it's other types of diversity too and types of jobs that people do, their educational backgrounds. And if, if we don't have affordable housing, we're going to lose that, so I, you know, when I moved here three and a half years ago, my house was affordable, it's not now. And so I want other people to be able to come that are like me. So, and in the land use plan, there's a reference on page thirty two about using the conditional zoning process to encourage a mix of housing types and price points, so I don't know, you know, I don't know the technicalities of what this process could do to more ensure that, but I'd love it if we looked into it. And yeah, I, I agree in inappropriate areas, increased density, reduce parking, do what it needs, you know, get more affordable housing in there. But I think that can also be balanced with my second area of concern, which is around conserving natural resources. A large portion of that property is part of that Headwaters Robinson Creek Natural Resource Overlay in the new land use plan. And I think there's some recommendations in the land use plan that are very specific about different priority habitat areas that the U D O has not caught up with those, right, around like Around like, um, on page 50, a hundred foot buffer along perennial streams and a 50 foot buffer along intermittent streams, 150 foot critical habitat buffer around wetlands and a wider 600 foot buffer beyond that to provide upland habitat protection for wildlife. That's on page 49. Preserving at least 75 contiguous acres of mixed hardwood and pine forest and at least 20 contiguous acres of early successional habitat. Those are just the areas I, I believe to be on that property, having lit my, that forest is also on my property. So I imagine that those are there. But again, it's like, if, if that's not in the U D O, I don't think that they have to conform to that. And right now they only are offering a 50 foot buffer. I saw Chatham Park and one of their rezonings is offering to voluntarily double that. I love it. If like, if I got one thing out of this, if we could double the riparian buffer, I think that'd be wonderful. And then my last area of concern is around creating walkable, bikeable, connected neighborhoods. I think that's where I see the most benefit here and why I am generally supportive. I would love it if someday my son could bike from my house to Pittsburgh Elementary School. Cause right now the only way to get to town is business 64 and that's not happening. So if I could bike to a grocery store, that would be wonderful. But that's also, I think, talking to my neighbors, that's their concern. Our roads are walkable, bikeable now. You can see my two-year-old on his balance bike. I did a quick head count. I think at least 13 dogs get walked on that road every day. So maybe you're going to connect us to town, but if it's not safe because there's, I don't know, construction vehicles, logging trucks, just fast traffic coming through. It's not a win-win. And I think now I am kind of speaking for my neighbors, but that's their biggest concern, making that a thorough road. So yeah, if we can't get sidewalks or negotiate something, I don't, I don't think it's right to make our neighborhood a through neighborhood for their benefit. But, you know, I love the, the greenway. I hope that they will preserve shade trees to help, you know, that forest, keep that neighborhood cool. I don't know if anybody's ever tried to go to the splash pad park in Chatham Park this time of year, but it's really miserable. And I hope that that's not what happens here. So that's my piece. Hopefully it was every three minutes. Thank you very much. And if you want to turn in your paper copy, I can give that to the board as well. Thank you very much.
One more speaker.
One more, yes. Amy Johnson. All right, Amy, same as before, name and address, please, and you'll get three minutes.
Good evening. Amy Johnson, 126 Reeves Road. I am neighbors with Davis. I was here last month. Two issues. One, I just want to reiterate, but I'm going to talk about the second one is to reiterate Davis that our road right there on Reeves Road, we do not want that to be used as a through fair into this new neighborhood. Like she said, her, she, her kid is walking on that. We have other children. We have people walking dogs. It's very quiet right now. So I reiterate that. And I think I, I have not talked to any neighbors that don't agree with that. My second one that I am going to talk about is the sensitivity of Roberson Creek or the vulnerability of Roberson Creek. Roberson Creek watershed did have a watershed management plan as recent as I think 2015. As we all know, Robson Creek flows into Hall River, which flows into Jordan Lake. All of those are on the EPA 303 D list for impaired water bodies under the Water Quality Act. There are two sections of Roberson Creek that are as well, not in this, in this proposed area. But right now, Roberson Creek is all wooded i- in this development currently. That is not going to be so if this development goes through. Is there any way I can bring up that map, the purple map?
Yes.
I just want to point something out. So there is, like I said, this stream is, is vulnerable. It, it also floods, stormwater is an issue. There are wetlands surrounding it and some hydroric soils. Can you go to the map? And they are putting a 50, they're proposing a 50 foot buffer. But they do not, I think that was on this. Yeah. On the page we were on before, they are asking no perimeter buffers will be required in environmental areas that contain floodplains, well, and stream, stream buffers and riparian buffers. The request is no additional vegetation will be required in these sensitive environmental areas. To me, say sensitive environmental areas indicates we should maybe look at this a little bit more carefully. So, uh, no pointer, huh? If you look at the dark purple, which is what the gentleman said is going to be where things are really booming. That dark purple square that's under 64, well, what is it but to the left? That's wetlands. Okay, that's Roberson Creek. And you've got the highest density right next to it with only a 50 foot buffer. So that's the kind of thing that I am concerned about. I think Pittsburgh should be concerned about, given the history of Roberson Creek and some of our water quality problems that have happened with, as these developments occur. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This, uh, being old business, we can entertain the motion to approve the Reeves Farm conditional rezoning request PB 23173 or reject it or table it for further study. And so I will have to table it to the board.
Eric, can I ask a follow-up question? Is this something where we could, this is a question for staff, could we approve this zoning? And then when site plans come in, we can make sure to take into account these requests?
Most part site plans are staff.
Okay.
So do I hear a motion to approve, deny or table?
Have all your reenterings been satisfactorily answered? All your questions? My questions have been satisfactorily answered. But coming back to the idea that if we rezone this, as I indicated, and one of the young ladies speaking also indicated, we, we don't have any teeth for them, well, the map's gone now, for them to put their entertainment center at the dark purple where they say it's going to be. And I'm not saying that out of any mistrust for the applicant. But he may get his approval five or 10 years down the road. This thing may be built. And they could put that wherever they want. Is what, you know, freedom was here when we got caught, I'd said with our pants down, if you excuse the expression, at Powell Place. And there was five times as many people in the room. And, and that was our fault. And so that's, that's where I'm hung up is, you know, again, no disrespect for the maps and everything they've laid out. But if we approve the rezone, then they can do it. They can do it the way they want. Now I've got a whole lot of other issues about, about road access. Setbacks, riparian buffers, some of these have been talked about. I didn't get into those because I'm really hanging my hat on, on, on just the blanket rezone that if we do that, what sort of green light we are, we are giving to this situation? I think it's a, I think it's a tremendous project if, you know, for, for its location and all, all that's offered. For example, now that we're, now that we're here, left, the left pink pod that fronts up against the properties to the left, that can be accessed, in fact, you see it accessed right now with a crossing coming in from the main body. And as much as I hate to say it, we're doing two stream crossings there. But you could also access that from the short stubout. I guess we're all looking this way, from the shortest stubout off 64, just west of where we are now at the Ag Center. And do one crossing there. Do a minor crossing parallel to 64. And then there would be no access points whatsoever to the properties to the west. So these are just things I'm looking at, you know, I don't, I don't know how much control or lack thereof, you know, we have as, as, you know, because I'm not a planner, but I'm just seeing that we can decrease or that someone can decrease a stream crossings, someone can eliminate access to the properties. And I hope y'all have been out there. I've been out there before, but to the west, because, you know, that's just a nice flat neighborhood. And it won't be if that road, it basically ties all this together, goes out to the west. I don't know why anyone would ever do that. Get out, but they've got the option to do it. So anyway, that was a long answer right to your question. Sorry.
You know, isn't it up to staff to kind of enforce this after the fact if it's approved?
I, I don't think.
Staff have any control of what, do it where? Or does it come back to us again?
No, it does not come back to you.
I said the zoning portion, but he's agreed with different blocks of being certain things.
Right.
Is that not enforceable?
It would be enforceable in the sense that we would simply be looking at what was approved in the rezoning.
I mean, if, if it's not approved to put strip joints, you can't put one in there if it's not, if it's in on paper right now.
Am I, am I, am I out of, out of, out of line, Randy?
Yeah. So let's start with environment.
I mean, I just, I just need to know if, if what I'm stating is, is, is true or not. Because when we, 12 years ago roughly, uh, we were told you guys approved the M U P D. And even though they told us they were going to put that high rise up front, they put it out back opposite a bunch of houses. You know, we were said, you know, we were told you're, you're stuck with it.
Carol, fundamentally, are you saying that you'd like to see the character districts somewhat rearranged? You're, you're in favor of a development, but you don't like the way things are situated?
Well, no, uh, no, I think, I think their plan is fine, but they're not.
If that's where they say they're going to put this house, and this is where it needs to be, they have, um, five years down the road. He don't, he does not want to look at it and say, we ride through the neighborhood and the house is actually over here. That's what he's wanting assurance of. You told me you're going to put out, it's plans you gave me today, with this, with the change in the zoning, you told me you're going to put da, 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 da. And I want it to be da, 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 and not five years down the road, you changed everything that you told me you were going to do. That's what he wants.
Your pardon? Where is the enforcement?
Well, the enforcement would be now with conditions stated by us or the town board. Now I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not in favor of some of the Ps that are in there that they have, which when we, you know, if we reassign the table and we give it a P, then they've got used by right over that whole thing. And that's, you know, so if we're going to start, you know, if, if we approve it, that's, if we approve it the way it's written, that's what, that's what we have, have, I have accepted.
Well, there's, so, and if I may, just quickly, so there's a, what I'm hearing is a disconnect. There's a primary use table, right? And then there's the character district map that we have filed as part of our resigning that we are saying this is what we're going to stand by. What we can do, if it would appear, is take the primary use chart and code it to each specific district. If that's okay. Instead of having this long list and not knowing where they go, we're saying they go in either the four A, four B zone. We could tie those uses to those zones if you would like.
Which actually kind of goes with the recommendation I was getting ready to make. Tony has sat down with the particular chart that I was having such an objection to, has repaired something that is different. I feel like that and the assignment he just gave himself might be an opportunity for you all. Fortunately, it would not be happening tonight for everyone involved, but it would be at your next meeting. So.
We would have to table this for three days. What's the pleasure of the board? Do you have the motions?
Can I ask one question? I think about a year, maybe two years ago, we approved their concrete, the concrete plan over at Pittsburgh Lockyer Road. It seemed like they were intending to work the both. I think it was two trucks at three, three to four. I joined five of the other day. There was like six or seven trucks there. If we, if somebody submits something, so I don't think this is just an issue for this particular.
No, it's not.
We need to come up with a solution to the problem. And I don't know what it is because I see it in numerous things.
Well, it sounds like you're saying we need to.
I mean, I've got that written down now for our comments at the end of the meeting. And I hope if any department doesn't leave before we have our comments. Because I have about three or four things that are all relative to exactly what you're saying. Chatham Park came to us last meeting with small area plan. They did an addendum to it and changed everything that, that was approved prior to it. So if in this particular case, they're going to change something and put X where Y was, then they should have to come back and do an addendum and they should go through the penultimate, but it's a nerd apartment over here.
Well, I think that's pretty much how that would happen.
Right.
You were getting ready to say something.
Well, yes, and I just want to be emphatic and state that we will tie the primary uses and the secondary uses to the character zones. And we're more than happy to work through that with staff and delegate that, you know, our thought is by the four zones, it's much like the future land use plan, here's mixed use center, this is where we want mixed use. Okay. Well, we tell it that the dark purple, that's what we're saying. And as we move out into either the neighborhood infill that's shown in our map, which is the three A, three B zone or into the conservation subdivision, which we've tried to demonstrate how that could work on the other side Robertson Creek, that's in the three A, three B zone. And in our minds, that's the map that we are committing to town Pittsburgh to execute. And if we want to deviate from that map, we have to come back to you. I will also, you know, just a couple of points on uh, the environmental framework, Robertson Creek, this is the map that we set down with town staff. And, and we had our wetland surveyor, we did full phase one, we've analyzed all the perennial streams, et cetera. And this is the map that the town staff at Reese Farm Pittsburgh have agreed to as environmental framework that we need to protect. Buffers associated with that. And so under the U D O, we've demonstrated that through the illustrative plan and through this character district map. And so that's what we're tied to. You know, one of the crossings is an old farm road. So we've leveraged an existing crossing that was already in place, that's been leveraged for years. And the other one, it was a minimalist point that we could find across Robertson Creek. As to Reeves Road, we're agnostic. If you drive through Pittsburgh today, there's so many dead ends in Pittsburgh, it's mind boggling. And it doesn't allow for good circulation or good access. That's why, you know, the traffic circle was the traffic circles, because there's not a lot, a lot of ways around the traffic circle, right? And so in a planner's point of view, connectivity is good. We're agnostic, right? The road is named Reeves Road. At least Reeves Farm, it was like, okay, somebody thought in the 1970s, when this subdivision was created, that they wanted to connect back to the farm because they knew the potential growth of the farm and the land was changed eventually. And it was both connections stuck to progress. We are happy to work through, uh, you know, part of this is life safety. And, you know, we're going to have to work with staff, we're going to have to work with the fire marshal, we're going to have to look at all aspects of that connectivity. We, you know, are more than happy to talk through bollards, removable bollards, fences. But again, our attitude is we want people in our community, we want them to get accessible to all. We're not putting gates on this community. This should feel like a neighborhood of Pittsburgh. This should have the same connectivity that road velocity, sidewalks, greenways. When you leave the courthouse and travel down West Street, you should feel like you haven't left Pittsburgh. You're still in Pittsburgh when this community is built. And so we are, you know, I'm emphatic, I'm excited, but the craft of the plan is very respectful of the historic kind of grid of Pittsburgh. Streets, blocks, connectivity. We've done our best to be as environmentally responsible as possible out of the whole 500 acres. We only have two stream crossings, right? Only two wetland impacts that we perceive this time. Now there is a chance of the force main and sewer lines and some utilities, but all that aside, you know, we've tried to be as sensitive, you know, we've left both ponds, we think about littoral edges. The craft of the zoning condition that the one speaker spoke to was that in the U D O, it says every perimeter buffer has to be planted. Well, hats are perimeter buffers in Robertson Creek. We didn't want to go in there and install non-native species or plant buffer plants within that repairing buffer. We wanted to leave it and preserve it and not touch it. So that's the way I crafted that condition. So that's the way I crafted that condition, was not to say, we believe in buffers. We think it's the right thing, but in this case, we didn't want to go into Robertson Creek and start planting things, because it's. Our property line and we have to put a thirty foot buffer in, so let's just go in willy nilly and plant things. No, we wanted to be as sensitive and back away from it as possible.
So I was just going to say, with all of those things. In mind, it is my recommendation that you all consider tabling this. Giving us an opportunity for one last swipe, so that when we get in this room the next time, we're gonna knock it out of the park. And it is my belief that that can't happen tonight, but it is something that can definitely happen between now and our next planning board meeting.
What's the pleasure of the board?
The question we table to the next meeting.
Thank you, Frida. Sarah second? Thank you, Bill. All in favor, aye? All opposed? Motion to table passes and so will bring us up, uh, in our attempt with the meeting.
Now, we'll see you all then. Thank you.
Steve, are we ready to circle back to old business, uh, letter A? Yeah, yeah, whatever. I'll, I'll explain about this as we had so many wonderful applications for the, uh. The two auxiliary positions on the planning board, highly qualified people who wrote, uh, really, uh. Excellent, thoughtful, insightful, uh, reasons for wanting to join the board. I, I was, I was just overwhelmed. So, uh, what, uh, I asked our members to do was, uh, each privately to reflect on these applications. And, uh, submit a recommendation to, uh, the director to be communicated to the town board and, uh. Directness of the podium.
We have it. Okay, for in town, the, uh, the conclusion is it should be Corey Forrest.
Corey Forrest.
Yes, sir. And for the E T J, Linda Batley.
Linda Batley for the E T J, very good.
In a second, too.
We'll, uh, we'll entertain a, a motion to, uh, either reject those or send them forward to the, uh, the town board.
Salute to accept.
Thank you, Carl and Frida. All in favor, aye? All opposed?
One final, one final comment. Would you all please write a letter to those that, uh, put an application in? It didn't get accepted to thank, thank them for their service.
And not, and I, I'm not just that, Carl, but a number of them, I said that they'd be interested in serving in other, uh, boards or capacities to them, the town. Which I, I, you know, think is just wonderful and, uh, uh, I see Mayor Perry back there. We've got some tremendous names, uh, to become civically involved in the township and, uh. Randy, please pass those applications on to Mayor Perry for, uh, for, uh, further consideration within other departments.
Will do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So that concludes old business. Moving on to new business. Item A is the Turkey Free Conditional Zoning Request. P B twenty-three, two eighty-nine, and Ms. Jenny Phelps is presenting, uh, this.
Alright, good evening, everyone. So I don't have a lot, but the applicant is here and they do have a presentation. So what I've done so far is I've pulled up the properties that are being considered for a rezoning. And if this looks familiar, it's because it is. It came to you all last year and the Board of Commissioners denied it. Um, because we didn't have any sewer capacity, but also we had just gotten in the middle of updating the land use plan. So I'll go ahead and turn it over. I believe Laura Holloman with McAdams will be, um, doing the presentation. Do you want me to go up and read to you?
Yes, we're gonna need that.
I know you're expecting Laura. She's here. She will be speaking. Um, unfortunately, for now, you have me. Um, and, uh, good evening, Chair Braun, Vice Chair Schaefer, members on the Pittsburgh Planning Board. And Representative the applicant for this item, which is Green Hawk Development. Jerry Medlin and Ben Glass, Green Hawk are here tonight. Uh, and also we have Ms. Laura Holloman, Ms. Daymar, Dr. Mr. Todd Prince with McAdams. You have a presentation?
It's a, oh, sorry, yeah.
And, and then, do you control?
Yes.
Well, anyway, um, as that's getting pulled up, uh, as is alluded to in the staff report, Be Hawk previously. Attempted to rezone this property, so you might recall having seen this before. Um, this board unanimously recommended approval last time, so we're hoping to, you know, recreate, recreate, repeat that success here again tonight. But some things about the project have changed and Laura will, uh, get into more detail on that. Uh, this was somewhat of an unusual case when the Board of Commissioners denied the request. It wasn't necessarily because they didn't favor the project, as, uh, Ms. Phelps indicated, the lack of sewer capacity. And, um, they also felt that it was a little premature to approve it, given that the town still was working on the. Not yet then adopted new comprehensive plan. The Commissioners actually asked us to come back once the conference plan was adopted, and so here we are. Uh, despite that direction, we've not taken anything for granted. Uh, the Commissioners also gave us some feedback on things to work on. And of course, we have had to try to address the newly adopted comprehensive plan as well. Uh, we've had two more neighborhood meetings. Um, so, you know, we're staying engaged with the community and in large part, we feel the feedback that we've gotten so far has been very positive. Yeah, actually, that slide that you had up was, this works too. You can see the site outline here in yellow. It's kind of two sites, in a sense, because they're separated from one another. And in total, it's about a hundred and thirty-nine acres. Currently, the property is owned heavy industrial. Like the adjacent concrete plant that I think was mentioned earlier and residential agricultural. From our communication with staff, neighbors and other stakeholders, um, doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of support. Everyone seems to agree that heavy industrial here is a detriment, so, you know, we would be, as indicated on the next slide. We would be actually. Rezoning the portion which is zone heavy industrial, we've been seeking to downzone that area. To allow for a mix of residential and less intense non-residential uses than currently are allowed in that district. We also are seeking to rezone the residential agricultural, uh, area to allow for single family and a limited amount of commercial. At the hardcore of Monqueir, Pittsburgh and Mont Zion. We believe this plan is consistent with the new comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. Uh, on the newly adopted future land use plan, these properties are designated for employment mixed use, traditional neighborhood infill. And there's a small portion of the site that is within a proposed mixed use activity center. The traditional neighborhood infill design is meant primarily for single family residential uses. With house scale multi-family and townhomes, employment mixed use areas are meant for employment, economic development opportunities. And like this site, are located along major transportation corridors. Our project implements both of these visions, and if you move to the next slide. Uh, the proposed townhomes are, and attached homes are situated away from the existing single family homes in Potterstone Village. That's in the upper, uh, left-hand corner. Um, so they're situated away from that, but they still create a sensible transition in the intensity of uses as you get closer to the road. Um, the office, light industrial and commercial uses are signed along Monqueir, Pittsburgh. Uh, which creates, you know, visibility along that corridor for those businesses. But at the same time, those uses are still integrated into the fabric of the newly proposed residential uses here. Uh, in, in my opinion, this is the future of development that the town's, uh, comprehensive plan envisions. And all that is to say that this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I'm gonna turn it over to Laura to tell you more about the specifics of the project, which you can see a concept band there.
Oh.
Hi, good evening. Welcome. Good to see everyone again. Um, so, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. As, uh, Neil said, my name is Laura Holloman with McAdams. Um, and I'm the project planner, uh, for this case. Uh, Neil did a great job of explaining the existing zoning is not the best or right fit for this area. And the new com- comprehensive plan is certainly working to correct that. Um, a lot of our rezoning vision does work towards making it a better fit, as Neil stated, uh, making sure we are aware of. Of what is around us. Uh, we did this through, uh, providing adequate transitions, which was also touched on either through buffers or setbacks. Um, adjacent to Potterstone Vi- Village, we've actually, you see that undisturbed stream buffer there. And we're not even accreaching into that a hundred foot floodplain. And the planned attached single family will be over three hundred feet away, and that is something that was. Um, the case in our previously rezoning request, uh, as well, so we have kept that in place. The adjacent concrete plant, we've had a lot of conversations about that. Uh, we know we have to be mindful of that. Uh, the plan itself has a five hundred, uh, or excuse me, fifty foot natural buffer with, that goes from their property line in. Um, that they've had to, um, be mindful of and enforce. Uh, previously on our last rezoning, we had a commitment, uh, to a fifty foot type A buffer from that, from. Our property line out, so that would be a, um, a total of a hundred feet. Um, type A, meaning it's fully opaque all seasons of the year. Um, the new rezoning request before you tonight also increased the no build setback to a hundred feet. So we did move units further away from the plant, so that's, you'll have a total of a hundred and fifty feet from, um. That, and the active development area of the plant in this, so we actually took away units right there, um, adjacent to the concrete plant. Um, and when you think about a hundred and fifty feet, I mean, that's greater, I mean, your interstate buffer is a hundred feet. So that's, I mean, that's a, of, that's an unprecedented amount of, of buffer. Uh, we wanted to do that to, to be mindful of what's going on around us. Um, internally, we're also providing a forty foot, uh, type B buffer, um, adjacent from the proposed M R zoning. Adjacent to the proposed M one light industrial zoning. Um, along the single family side, we've got a thirty foot type B buffer along the perimeter. Um, and then, of course, that nice undisturbed, uh, fifty foot stream buffer is gonna act like a nice transition between the single family homes. And the planned, uh, neighborhood scale commercial development there at the corner of Monqueir, Pittsburgh, Mount Zion roads. Amenities was also something we discussed at length, uh, not only for the neighborhoods, um, but we also look to create for amenities. For the town as a whole. Uh, we are providing some nice pocket parks and common open space that will allow for playing. Field opportunities and community gathering space. We see this as opportunity. You can see there's, uh, nice development areas throughout the, uh, light, uh, commercial, non-residential. And we see that as opportunities to create, you know, live after five events with the commercial areas as well as the residential neighborhoods. With both residents and patrons able to interact and enjoy, uh, the greenway there along, um, the eastern side. Will also, that goes where the old railroad right of way was. So we're committing to, um, constructing the public greenway as well as develop the, um, adjacent linear park. Where we see benches, exercise equipment, picnic tables and so forth, um, which will all be done on the. Um, on the developer's dime, and we see that as starting to continue a nice town greenway, uh, to downtown. Which is, uh, which will be nice and set up, uh, nicely for other, um, greenway projects in the future. Uh, we, uh, residential types, I wanted to talk about those, because those have changed slightly for the better. Adjacent to Potterstone, uh, will be what we call single family attached. Which from the street will look like typical single family. They'll have, uh, separate side yards. They'll just have rear storage units that are connected. And then from there, we've transitioned entirely to rear loaded townhomes. Uh, this is something, quite frankly, we're, we're very excited about, because it'll allow for more pleasing street, streetscapes, uh, with the front door being prominent. Not just, you know, the, the garages that you see along, along the street and other, uh, typical townhome communities. Uh, we also are committed to providing affordable housing units, uh, which are there in the lighter pink area adjacent to the commercial. Uh, those will also be comprised of the same colors, materials, um, as the market rate units. So for the passerby and visitors, um, you won't be able to discern, uh, from one affordable to the next. Other than the fact that they are surface parked. Uh, and those are, that was, um, a lot of the feedback that we received, uh, from the board. Uh, we also have increased, uh, the non-residential, because again, we want to make sure that we're providing a meaningful checkmark to the, um, employment. Uh, portion of the comprehensive plan, and we think we've done that, uh, increasing it to almost seventy thousand square feet. This was, you know, quite frankly, a, a great project the first time I went around. Uh, we were, uh, we were pleased to get a unanimous, uh, recommendation of approval from you all. It was just determined that the timing was slightly off. Uh, we were told to play patiently wait until the comprehensive plan was considered and approved. To make sure Pittsburgh could really be thoughtful of development and smart growth. And we listened and we put down our, our pens and we came back to you all to make a good project great. And we think that we've done that, and we look forward to answering any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Or remember questions?
Um, my question is on the other, any quarrels, um, down there, those home sites is very close to Monqueir, Pittsburgh road. And I'm just wondering if you can tell us more about those.
Yeah, that'll be, that, those will have, uh, a thirty foot buffer adjacent to the, to the road. Those will, uh, you'll have to remind me of the rear yard setback in our ten.
You increase the high density populated in this development? And so by how much?
Uh, about fourteen units. Fourteen units, I believe, residential. Fifteen feet is the, is the rear setback for our ten, and then we'd have a thirty foot.
The population, the increase.
There are, we have not increased the single family attached, this adjacent to Potterstone, that has stayed the same. Um, internally, where we have the rear loaded centrally located townhomes, we, we have added more of those, I believe, around fifteen units. Um, so those have increased by fifteen units.
We have increased density housing in this development.
Yes, yes.
And my second question, I've been doing a lot of research on my history now. And in seventeen eighty-one, Warren Wallace, fifteen hundred troops camp just north. Yes, north of your location, they marched from that location to Pittsburgh, Monqueir. So you're in the middle of some real good history, how you're gonna protect it. Chatham Park is done, and I know we, we got a commitment today and reference to that from the, the previous people. I'm asking you how you can.
In terms of doing, doing an archaeological study?
Yeah, I mean, these bulldozers down here can move grass, dirt, fat, and I've never seen my whole get fired, I've been in buildings my whole life. So put a graveyard, I guess, I don't believe there's one there from our research, but. There's a, there could be anything in there. We know that there was a lot of British soldiers that got. Wounded in battle, they died on their ways. You know, they could be buried anywhere along, from there all the way down. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the route, because it was called Cross Creek Road at the time, it wasn't Pittsburgh, Monqueir Road, but it went from basically. About a half a mile north of where you're at now, all the way down to Pittsburgh or to Monqueir. Which was Ramsey's Tavern or Ramsey's, you know.
So I think it would be.
I'd like to know what you're gonna do to make sure.
I think, I think it would be, you know, disingenuous for us to say that we have a plan for that. This is, I'm gonna say new information for us. Um, and I am a little bit curious to understand what you. What, what, what you would like to see done in that regard, and, and in that, in that, I would say, you know, you, you've just suggested, and. Jeremy Medlin with Beanheart, um, will address, but you had suggested that there could be bodies buried.
There could be anything. We don't know.
Hard things, whatever.
You know, there could be cannonballs, or it could be weapons, it could be anything. And more of this is coming up every day. I've worked on it. I hit more gold in the last month than I did in the last three years of doing this research. And I believe we probably brought it up at the last meeting to a degree, but now we have more concrete evidence of what has happened in that area. All I'm asking is, are you gonna follow me to a Chatham Park?
Let me, let me turn it to you.
So I'm, I'm Jeremy Medlin. I'm the executive vice president. So we cure, we own the property outright. Uh, we have done extensive environmental site assessments already, have not located anything. And I, and I appreciate your concern. That doesn't mean it's not there. But to date, we have not located any, any evidence of that, any, any evidence of graves or cemeteries. Uh, cannonballs, I would love to find one myself. I'm a rock hound, uh. I'm a collector of. So, uh, we will explore. So uh, we will explore that in, in greater detail, but to date, we have not located anything in our environmental site assessment.
Jay?
Yeah, so I did pour this over to Cy Robbins and he did have some comments saying that the um, historical association takes no position on the proposed rezonings and they're not aware of the existence of any graves on the subject par- parcels. Uh, nevertheless, care should be taken during development to look for burial sites as much of the subject land was a large, was part of a large plantation worked by generations of slaves. Um, they mentioned the water features and about the potential for Native American habitation and care should be taken to look for artifacts during the development. So I did comment on it.
Yeah, I, I have a machine there.
Okay.
Trying to.
Incorporate it.
Make sure I got in. When it was in the records.
Sure. Thank you.
Bill.
The railroad, by the way, you got there, my understanding, when they've been in the railroad, that went all back to the landowners. Do you all own that?
Yes.
Is that part of your buffer?
We've, we've already dedicated that easement, sir. In the town of Pittsburgh, then you've got enforcement easement that will come down through there. We've already dedicated the easement.
The whole thing?
Well, you said, I think it's the third front easement. That was done probably two years ago.
Just one other question. What are your plans on Monqueir Road? As far as if I live there.
Yeah.
You can sleep and, and hope you use that damn house on the road. You can sleep in one of them at night. I wanna meet them. I live three times that far away from the road and it's always impossible to sleep in the front of the house. The truck backed for them, and nothing, and never stopped.
So your question is mostly about the noise?
Yeah. Are you looking at any kind of a, an annoyed buffer between the road and the houses or?
Well, you can see in this top corner where we got the non-residential up for his Monqueir, Pittsburgh. I think your question might be more relevant to the south side, right, to um, where the single family are.
Yeah, down that area because it's, it, it's unbelievable. I have a traffic from the road.
Right.
And it's gonna increase with them fast and everybody else.
No doubt, right.
Plus the, the bypass is supposed to cross that road somewhere in the room where I've got it. It's gonna have a circle.
Yeah, that, that um.
And there's another project on the other side of my.
Yeah.
Get the town, but it's the other side.
Yeah, but I'm saying like, there's gonna be a lot more.
So the plan now is to have a, a thirty foot semi opaque buffer there. So we would install, of course, we'd have a, we'd be required to do the sidewalk and then we'd have plantings beyond that thirty foot with plantings. Um, you could, so you know, that's a, that would conform to the type B U D O standards for landscape material. But I believe this semi is so. But uh, uh.
That's interesting.
Certainly understand the concern.
Well, home builders might wanna consider triple days windows.
Replace it all.
Alright.
Yeah. It's without reading.
I, I got a question for Jamie. Uh, because we are going into three or four districts, C two, C Z, M R C Z. Uh, unlike the last application, will, will these be tied somehow to the maps that they have defined? Is there?
I'll zoom in. So as you can see here, they have noted the zoning district boundary. Um, it's a little difficult to see, but they have this kind of dotted line.
Yep.
Showing where that boundary is and the same thing uh, to the south property.
Yeah, so we've, we've submitted the surveyed legal description for each zoning district. So those all, those will, those will be locked down.
Okay, I did see some survey language. So, so that's, that's tied in the conditions. Okay.
And the uses are also limited per each district.
Yeah, I saw that.
Any further questions or board discussion?
Yes, I have a question about the traffic plan. I was looking through your proposal and there was a lot of roadmaps with arrows. And I was wondering if you could walk us through how people are gonna get in and out of these neighborhoods and businesses. On Monqueir, Pittsburgh. Will there be added lanes?
There, there will be turning lanes, dedicated turn lanes at each, at each, at each entrance. So that, that is true. I believe I'm not speaking out of turn all this.
Very welcome. Other questions? So we'll entertain a board motion to approve.
Fair.
Oh, excuse me.
If anyone signed up to see.
Was there anyone signed up?
The only people who signed up were these two right here.
Oh. Again. Perfect. It presented well. So we will entertain a motion to approve, deny, or table. What's the board's plan here?
Thank you much for your input.
Second. Rita moves to approve as Carl seconding. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? One day. One day recorded for, for others. So it goes forward and thanks very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item of new business, it's the uh, Belmont Station, the M U P D uh, revision request. I have P B twenty-three, three oh six. This helps your listed here as a planner.
So this project, it was previously approved in uh, two thousand and seven. And with the way that the market has been changing, the um, applicant along with the C E group have come forward to recommend some changes to the existing plan. So before I go into some of the differences that I had found and before Mark comes up to present, um, if you decide to deny this and the commissioners also decided to deny this, it doesn't mean the project can't still be developed. It just means it's gonna be developed under what was, what's currently approved. So what they're requesting are just specific changes to what is currently there to be updated, so to say, to match the market. So should be able to see. Uh, currently, they're proposing four hundred and five dwelling units an acre uh, or dwelling units total to include single family dwelling apartments and townhomes. And what they're proposing is six hundred and thirty-six dwelling units. Um, of that will be two hundred and forty-five single family dwellings, seventy-five townhomes, three hundred and sixteen apartment units, and that includes the existing seventy-six that are there. So that would be two hundred and forty additional. Can you all see that or do, I do, I need to make it bigger? Why do you do that?
Um, I'd be a presenter option in under view, but you are in, you are in word.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's um, it's a document. Zoom down here.
I have a paper.
Okay. I'll stick it up there because I can't see it. Very well. So that equals out to being three point three six dwelling units an acre for what's existing and then four point one one for what is proposed. They mentioned a walking trail in the original plan and the new one has no mention of a walking trail. The minimum lot width for single family dwellings is fifty foot and not to exceed thirty-five foot in height. And the new minimum lot width is forty-two feet and townhomes will be anywhere between eighteen to twenty-eight feet and there's no height restriction. Um, townhouses and apartments uh, were located on the plan to serve as a transition. And now they're proposing apartments to serve as a transition between the commercial office, retail and single family dwelling. And the apartment heights are not to exceed forty-five feet. Um, the hotel, there was a hotel proposed. And then I didn't see a hotel mentioned, but uh, Mark will go over that because they are still proposing one. Originally, there was really no phasing exhibit and now they are adding a phasing exhibit. The frontage for single family dwellings was fifty foot and they're proposing to reduce it to forty-two feet. The apartments um, had setbacks and now they're proposing setbacks just for apartments on the perimeter and a forty-five foot height max. Townhomes were originally twenty-five feet for setbacks in three stories. And they're proposing twenty-four, twenty foot for the front, zero foot for the side setbacks, fifteen foot for the rear and then forty-five foot height, foot height max. They're proposing no front, no frac setback for commercial office and retail with a ten foot side and rear setbacks and a four story max. And now they're proposing ten foot side, ten foot setbacks all around in a fifty-five height max, fifty-five foot height max. So originally, the permitted uses reference the zoning ordinance. And as you know, we have the U D O. And so what they have done is, is they have included a permitted use table for the proposal. Um, originally, on-street parking was allowed throughout the projects and now long-term on-street parking is not permitted. The anticipated water demand has increased from one hundred and eighty-five thousand G P D to uh, plus minus two hundred thousand G P D. The anticipated sewer demand was uh, just over a hundred and sixty-five thousand G P D. And now they're going up to a hundred and seventy thousand G P D, which includes the existing apartments. They're proposing a dry sewer extension in phase one. They will submit a developer's agreement once sewer capacity is available. And the majority of the sewer will be directed towards the existing Lowe's lift station. Originally, there is no transit accommodation detail and now they include specific transit details as, as well as the V U A, which is a vehicular with use area. They have off-street parking alternatives. Um, there is no landscape, landscaping detail included in the, in the proposed changes. They are, but they are expanding the open space detail and the landscape detail later on. The project boundary was originally twenty foot and now they're increasing it to thirty foot. Um, also proposing a fifty foot buffer along the U S sixty-four bypass to be maintained and a thirty foot perimeter buffer along the boundary between incompatible uses. Um, originally, they had internal landscape buffers and there is no mention of internal buffers, but they do have a tree protection detail. Originally, uh, they stated the signage would meet the zoning ordinance. Uh, now they're stating the signage will meet the U D O requirements. They had lighting detail at first and now they have expanded further on the lighting detail. Uh, we did discuss stormwater and Morgan did comments um, on that to them. And they also have included a parking requirements detail. That's all I had. And I'll go ahead and let Mark Ashness um, talk to you about what needs to talk to you about.
Thank you, Janie. Uh, good evening, board members and staff. Mark Ashness for the C Group. We have an office in Mosaic at three sixty-seven Freedom Parkway. Um, is it possible to put the approved plan and the uh, and the proposed plan on the same screen?
Yeah.
That sounds good. So I was looking in the room here and uh, there's some elected officials that were here in two thousand and seven when we stood up here with Ricky Spoon uh, to propose this particular project. Um, we're now uh, doing this work for Pratt and Gov and Chandak. Uh, they purchased the property about eight years ago and then eventually Ricky was phased out of that. So it's the, the Chandak family. Uh, and if, if you're not familiar with them, uh, we've worked on them with projects in Briar Creek in the Raleigh area. They also own the Sienna Hotel on Franklin Street in Chapel Hill. They own and operate it. So they're, uh, they're local to the area. And so they're, they're the developers of the project. A lot has changed since two thousand and seven. And as Janie mentioned, we're, we're interested in sort of just bringing the project up to current market demands and standards. And um, you know, a lot of that has to do with the, some of the things that y'all have mentioned earlier, affordable housing. Uh, you know, how do you make housing more affordable? People are now accustomed to, you know, having smaller lots and such. So that's, that's one of the ways we do that. Um, if you look at the original plan and, so the proposed plan is on your right and the original plan is on your left. Uh, there's a loop road that starts where the McDonald's is located, comes by the Lowe's Home Improvements. That road, as you know, if you've been out there, has been built up to an apartment area and then it stops right now. Um, but the original plan, that road continues through the project and then eventually comes back out on Hillsborough Street closer to town. So you can see that basically that loop road that we have still exists. Um, and then there was also in the approved plan, there was a connection uh, to, to Belmont Ridge Road and Chatham Forest on the far left side. Uh, and so we, we still have that um, connection made there. Uh, so those are basically the same, same approach. What we have done is we have increased the density marginally from three point four one units to four point one units to the acre. And so with that increase in density, how, you know, how could we do that? Because we've more than doubled the open space on the property. Well, we did that through apartments and townhomes. That's basically where that change occurred. But if you look at the two maps, one of the things we did is there's a lot of steep slopes out here. Um, and if you look along the main loop road, Lowe's Drive Extension, you'll see that on the original plan, we had a lot more roads sort of coming off of that and particularly over near the Chatham Forest Project. In addition to the connection, we had another cul-de-sac that sort of came back across and, and went behind some of the lots. What we've done specifically is we've really eliminated a lot of those connections and our plan is, and it shows in our exhibits, to leave those areas vegetated as open space. So that's how we've been able to more than double the open space for the project is basically just staying out of those steep, steep slope areas and compacting the development. When we had the neighborhood meeting, we had a, we had some good attendance from the Chatham Forest residents primarily. Uh, you know, they're concerned about the connectivity, you know, to their road. As mentioned earlier, on the Reeves property, most towns like to see that cross connection, you know, when you have, there's a stub from Chatham Forest to our property uh, today. But the traffic, uh, since two thousand and seven, we've had Raimy Kemp, a soils and environmental consultant, go out there and a fiscal analysis done, updated to, to the current standard. So Raimy Kemp and Associates was a transportation engineer. They went out and did new traffic counts, submitted all that stuff to N C D O T and D O T commented on that. And all of that is in, in the package that you have. So basically about it, full buildout, they, they believe and D O T agrees that about twenty-five percent of the traffic would hit the Hillsborough Road closer to town. Seventy-five percent of the traffic is gonna come out by the commercial area where the McDonald's is today. And some of y'all are probably aware, D O T is actually doing a road improvement project and a, and a path project on Hillsborough. Um, so that's recognized in the report. We, uh, the developer is still obligated to make some other improvements. If you're coming off the bypass and you're wanting to make a left into the Lowe's Home Improvements where McDonald's is, we're gonna be adding a second left turn lane. So we're not extending, we're just, there'll be two left turn lanes at that location. Uh, there'll also be a D cell lane if you're coming from Pittsburgh, turning in, we'll be extending that. Inside the shopping center, we'll be adding a left turn lane into the home improvements area there. So there's enough room to do that. And then at the southern entrance there closer to town, uh, there's gonna be a right turn D cell for traffic coming out of town to that location. So that basically D O T has reviewed all of that and said, we, we agree, these are the things you should do in addition to the stuff we're already planning to do out there. So all of those improvements are planned with the project as well. Um, at the neighborhood meeting, there was some good discussion about a public park. We had originally just shown a community park, sort of a private park, if you will, uh, that was about three and a half acres. And so in addition, we've added a six acre public park on the opposite side of the street. And um, we'll have sidewalks, you know, on all the streets, both sides. So someone like leaving Chatham Forest would be able to come down, use the public park or continue down via sidewalk, you know, all the way to the commercial activities that are there. So you know, that was one of the things that we've changed to the plan uh, as a result of that meeting. The um, one of the things that Janie mentioned, uh, is that our, our client is in the hotel business and they, they did ask, we, we have a very limited use in our commercial area. If you look at it, it's mainly um, medical, professional office, uh, restaurant, restaurant with drive-through um, in, inside climate controlled uh, mini storage with no outside storage. Uh, and we would like to add a hotel to that particular category, but it's a very limited category. Um, as far as fiscal improvements go, this project will uh, add a hundred and ninety-five million to the property tax base. And that's, that equates to about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year annually on the tax side and about one point three million to the general fund. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Would you uh, go all the way, like, with the road improved, like where, where Belmont is, is it's not the best, but I mean, would that road, road be improved when you start developing that property onto the right?
Yes, there'll be sidewalks and, and. Yes, there'll be sidewalks and and walk all along that road going up, uh, along that.
Cause right now we, the bus actually chug kind of bus pulls in that into Belmont.
Got you.
We have to back out.
I got you, yeah.
In that row.
That's a, so. So ultimately, the way it's phased, um, phase one comes up and continues past those apartments. And there'll be an intersection up there that's in phase one and there'll actually be a road that would loop back through that. Uh, there would be ultimately, uh, the connection of the full loop of Lowe's Drive, which would actually create a full loop around.
Okay.
That would be when the project's fully completed, right? So there'll be a, there would be a moment there where you'd still have. The the bus having to come in and not necessarily pull into a driveway and back out, but.
Right, and you pull into Belmont and we stop right there at the beginning of the road.
Yeah.
That's where the kids stand right there and we just pull in, let them in, and then we just back back out into the road and go back down Lowe's Drive.
Got you. So for future transportation, Chatham Transit, whoever, w- we do have a bus uh stop plan that's on the main drive there. That's just past the Belmont. So there'd actually be a spot for the bus to pull over uh and have a bus storage lane.
Okay.
Mark. Trying to find on the map where my question is, uh.
While you're looking at Carl, we increased the buffers all the.
Okay, I see it now. Uh, so right behind Eric's head, you've got two pink and purple.
Uh, yes, yes.
And that is a whopping wide flood plain in there. And then the one. I don't see a north arrows, but the one in the lower right part of the screen fronts on sixty four, so there will be.
That's right.
Access to that.
That's correct. So that pink that you're referring to is apartments. So uh, so the. That's really the only buffer impact we've got is across that section there.
Right, yeah.
And we've and we've widened the buffer there. Um, so the idea is. We we did the project, the apartments in Powell Place, and I might have known what you were talking about earlier, Carl. Uh, and then we're doing the apartments in Northwood right now. So you you're already seeing sort of the apartments fronting on the, and it's sort of a marketing thing, if you will, right? So the idea is there might be like two buildings on that side uh that would back up to, the apartments would likely back up to sixty four like they do. At Powell Place, uh, and and that would be an internal apartment driveway crossing. There wouldn't be a public street connecting that.
It's a lot of real steep slope, really, almost to get to the sixty four driveway. I'm, I'm not, I'm not the engineer designer, so I guess I'm struggling with seeing why you're, why you're grasping for the utility of that little nugget.
Sure.
There's gonna be so many uh construction uh challenges.
Yeah.
Plus the crossing.
Right. I- i- it's gonna be a private crossing, private driveway crossing versus a public street, which which allows us to be a little more, less impactful, if you will. But there is some marketing advantage gained by having that is. Cause we're, we're somewhat back from the the Lowe's Home Improvements and the existing commercial Caroline Burry kind of shields the project, right? And it, it, that's the reality. I mean, I think you see there's some business behind the Lowe's Home Improvements and. It's probably somewhat challenging for them today right now because they're kind of hidden. Uh, so that that's really the basis for for the, for that. Uh, but I can certainly, uh. You know, I would guess that's probably a second phase of the of the apartments, uh, if we go across there.
Janie, uh, I can't find it now, but I saw some reference to the use table. Or, or, but I can't find it in my packet. Uh, are there some additional uses being proposed other than what? Were originally in the M U P D?
It's a lot less.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's much more restrictive. The the original M U P D had a bunch of uses.
Okay.
There, it's very specific. Now, the only thing I would like to add is that. Like, we've only got like seven uses in that one commercial zone that you see there, and I would like to add hotel with the same height limit that's already set up for that.
We already had that.
Right, yeah, that's right.
Uh, question, Janie, uh, long term on-street parking is not permitted. How do, how do we define long term?
So we could be overnight.
Long time is overnight. So what happens to, so if you go up to the belt to Lowe's. On that street, on the side of the apartments are on, there are cars parked there all the time, all the time. I mean, I know it's at least ten, if not more, there's just park.
So that's somewhat of an existing condition, if you will. It sounds like maybe that, we we didn't do that apartment project, but maybe it sounds like that project doesn't have enough parking, maybe in there. I have, I need to go up there and look at that, but I, what I can tell you is, is that we'll have adequate parking for all the uses that we're proposing. And that, you know, that existing apartment section in that street that sort of comes in. Uh, like a stem, if you will, is an existing condition today. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't address that aspect of it.
Is it not gonna hurt your park, you're, you're working on the road because those cars are gonna be sitting there?
It will. I mean, i- i- it, we're, we're not gonna be improving that section of road other than probably adding more sidewalks and things of that nature, some landscaping. Along that section because that road's been, you know, the curve's in on both sides, right? That's right. That's right.
What is, what is the road width in the internal park of where the yellow is and. Do you happen to know what the road width in Powell Place is?
It says pure white, fifty foot right away to the ball.
Yeah, so the Lowe's Drive section is uh thirty two foot. Uh, excuse me, it's thirty seven foot back to back. So that's a wider road, more of a collector. And then that's definitely wider than Powell Place, uh, just from our experience when we worked on some of the stuff in there. So. Um, and then some of the smaller roads are twenty seven foot back to back, which is more in line with what you see in at Powell Place.
Okay. Since Powell Place, we wound up restricting parking to one side because the fire truck couldn't fit.
Right, yeah.
So is that. Uh, now you've got parking off-street.
Exactly, we do. And then the Lowe's Drive is thirty seven foot back to back. So that's gonna feel, which you should feel, it's a looping road that touches Hillsborough Street at two locations. It should feel, um, you know, like it's a road that's gonna move you around.
Thank you. Further question to this. Molly, do we have anybody that's uh most speaking here? Well, I'll put it to the board, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny or table. I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you very much, Carl and Frida, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It's passed unanimously then.
Thank you.
Very much. Moving on to our uh third new item, which is P B twenty three three ten, the holding conditional zoning request. Uh, again, then, Janie, you're on deck.
All right, last one. So, uh, again, I don't have a lot on this one. It's just. Kind of the same uh rezoning request that's come for the last few times um from Chatham Park Investors. Uh, again, it's for multifamily uh adjacent to their P D D and this is just one that's further north. Um, the only main comment I had, uh, as you all know, staff has recommended they, if they can't have the public amenities onsite. That they're located within a half mile, because that's generally tends to be more walkable. And with this one, they're proposing to have it within a mile, I believe, and that is because of the Hall River Trail. Um, on the Chatham Park property. And so that's about three quarters of a mile from the closest part of the site. So that's why it's not the half mile for this time. But I believe Patrick is here to give you some more information.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning board members. I'm Patrick Bradshaw. Uh, I practice law at one twenty eight Hillsborough Street in Pittsboro. And I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Chatham Park Investors, on this proposal to rezone approximately a hundred and twenty nine acres. Off Rock Springs Church Road adjacent to the Chatham Park P D D. As staff has reported, we are seeking to rezone three parcels. The northern parcel is approximately seventy nine acres and is currently zoned R A five. The balance of the property, the two southern parcels are approximately forty nine acres and are currently zoned R A two. We are seeking to rezone these parcels from their current residential agricultural zoning designation to multifamily residential conditional. The structure of this proposed rezoning, as Ms. Phelps mentioned, is very similar to the Grantham parcel rezoning and a couple of others that you've seen. Grantham, of course, was approved earlier this year. Uh, the rezoning would establish two districts. One is labeled M R one. Which has a higher density than the second district, which is labeled M R two on the maps. Robbie Oldham, the engineer for the project. In a few minutes, and walk you through a few more particulars about where those uh different districts are and what the uses would be in those districts. As you all know, there are two basic parts to your review of this application. The first is making sure the rezoning factors that are identified in the U D O. And in the town's rezoning application form can be met by approving the rezoning. We included an extensive narrative in the application regarding those ten factors. Your staff has reviewed those factors and our narrative regarding them. I'm not going to repeat all that information tonight, which I'm sure you're pleased to hear. Um, but we have, we would be happy to focus on any of those uh as to which you might have questions. Probably the most important factor for your consideration and for your determination on this is whether the proposal is consistent. With the approved land use plan for the town of Pittsboro. The subject property is designated residential on the future land use map that was adopted as part of the twenty twenty three Pittsboro Land Use Plan. As contemplated by the land use plan for land located within areas designated for residential development. The property will allow for a newer subdivision built outside of the town proper. Within suburban areas. The residential designation under the land use plan specifically encourages smaller lots. In combination with townhomes and small scale apartments, which can be used in combination with larger lot, single family homes. It further contemplates neighborhoods where sewer service is expected to extend to reach future and planned developments. Sewer service will be extended to this property through the development of Chatham Park. And water service will be supplied to the property through the development of Chatham Park and the extension of Chatham Parkway. The timing of which Robbie Oldham will also review with you. To protect the two mainstreams on the property and to promote the prioritization of conservation areas called for by the land use plan. The applicant is proposing to voluntarily double the mandated riparian buffers. Uh, along each side of those streams from fifty feet to one hundred feet. The balance of the property outside the stream buffers is within the lowest category of relative conservation value. As shown on the relative conservation value map that is part of the land use plan. This proposed conditional rezoning is consistent with the land use plan and housing recommendations in the land use plan. This conditional rezoning will help address the lack of available housing by accommodating a mix of housing types in well-designed neighborhoods. This conditional rezoning rezoning will allow a development plan that may include multifamily, townhomes, duplexes. And a range of single-family lot sizes. It will also encourage a mix of housing types in new developments. Likewise, the conditional rezoning will encourage a mix of housing types and price points through the conditional zoning district process. This conditional rezoning will remove barriers to attached and missing middle housing types. That are imposed by the existing R A five and R A two zoning requirements. The proposed multifamily residential conditional zoning facilitates provision of the proposed uses consistent with the land use plan. Also, the proposed cap on the maximum number of dwelling units makes the proposed conditional rezoning entirely consistent with the land use plan. The portion of the property that is further from the existing town proper will have a correspondingly lower density. Of approximately two residential dwelling units per acre. Creating a sensible transition to the existing larger lot subdivisions to the north. The portion of the property closer to downtown and physically proximate to the Chatham Park P D D. Will have a higher density of approximately four residential dwelling units per acre. This will encourage a development pattern that transitions in density and scale away from activity centers. The proposed conditional rezoning is conditioned with the land use plan statements about roadway alignments. Given that it is designed with the extension of Chatham Parkway in mind. The second part of your review and approval has to do with ensuring that the proposed conditions applicable to the rezoning are satisfactory to the town and to the applicant. I'm glad to report that your staff reviewed the proposed conditions, which are very similar to the Grantham conditions that you've already reviewed and approved. And had only one comment regarding condition number six, in which we are requesting the ability to satisfy recreation requirements. Either on the property or within one mile of its boundary. In order to include the proposed Hall River or Haven Creek Greenways or both in the recreational facilities to be provided. And that's the one that Ms. Phelps spoke to you about. The applicant held two community meetings for this project. Between the two meetings, eleven interested people attended. And our application included a written report on the comments and and thoughts that were expressed at those meetings. Hopefully, we've anticipated the questions you might have. Of course, our hope for for the outcome of this evening. Is that you would be comfortable recommending approval of the rezoning to the Board of Commissioners. At this point, I'd like to turn things over to Robbie Oldham with Withers and Ravenel. Walk you through some of the more specific information about the proposal. And after that, we'll be happy to field any questions that you might have and respond to any other comments you might receive.
Good evening, Robbie, and Withers, I mean, it'll get to see everybody. So, uh, Patrick, uh, we're making overlap a little bit on our presentation, but. Of course, you know me, I like visuals, so um, and really what we concentrate is just on the land use plan and two topics associated with a land use plan. That's one is infrastructure and second is land use. Um, really, you know, i- if you look at the land use plan, the key, you know, most of those discussions and rezoning and what you're gonna do on that. Is depending on infrastructure, I E sewer. Uh, once you have public sewer, then you're looking at, you know, smaller lots, a mixed lots and things like that. So the second, when I got to think about this, we do have an update on Chatham Parkway. It's a D O T update, not a Chatham Park update. Uh, but really, when you, when you're looking at this, you you gotta look at Chatham Park. So we took this, we highlighted the portion of Chatham Park in North Village in the green. You see the Odom track here in the blue, so if you go to the next slide. So the update. Yep. So if it, yeah, it is really with the D O T portion of Chatham Parkway, so. Uh, just let me zoom down just a little bit more, Jenny, I'm sorry. Let me see the schedules on there. There you go. So the update with D O T on Chatham Parkway is they just, they've, they've got a portion, the blue is existing Chatham Parkway. The green and the orange are uh N C D O T project, the R fifty nine thirty A and R fifty nine thirty B. The green is um the A portion, of course, and that was just bid and let by B and T last week, so they're getting to start construction of that next month. That won't be completed in two years. The orange is roughly will follow that by a year. So i- if you're looking at this, approximately in three years. That orange portion will be built and built all the way out to fifty five oh one. And you can see the open track in the blue there, that is key, that's a key connection to this open track. So that, we're, we're proposing a residential. Laker Street to tie it back into there. So it's a good update, but it's also just to show you that, you know, I know it's a lot of concerns about roadway connections and everything else. That is, that, that's intended to be our primary access to this track and that's the reason we're here. Uh, if it wasn't, you know, we might not be here as quick as we are now. But um, second part of this, as far as the utilities. Uh, water line will be extended up Chatham Parkway. There'll also be water line extended through Chatham Park through, uh, to this site. Uh, Santa's store will be extended through the development of Chatham Park and eventually uh through Chatham Park and then town and or uh city of Sanford. So next slide. Um, this basically goes back to the same exhibit, land use, the uh town's future land use plan. So and the point is here, I just wanted to, you know, okay. What are we gonna do with, we got infrastructure and then what we're proposing on as far as the rezoning and the news. If you see here, um, this is clearly in the yellow, so this, if you look at the legend here, this is all, this is residential. And, you know, so if you look in the town's land use plan, I'm gonna quote here, as far as for uh residential areas. I'm quoting smaller lots in combination with townhomes and small scale apartments can be used in combination with larger lot, single family homes. Or larger conservation areas in the same development. These typically are supported by public utilities. So back, that's a great exhibit, and that's the one that's definitely put the energy together. Same thing, showing the same thing. So then, you know, when we look at this, when we look at the U D O. Um, it's okay, what. um, it's okay, what to meet that requirement of a mix and uses, then we'd look, it's okay with the U D O, we're looking at a multifamily, rezoning to a multifamily, but with conditions. So I think to Mr. Shaver's point earlier, you know, we're not proposing a blanket rezoning here or blanket zoning. Where is this this conditional and it has uh, several conditions. Uh, we feel like we're trying to simplify this and dial it down. So it is very, I I won't say restricted. It is, uh, it's it's not a open rezoning and we've got eleven conditions. I want to just highlight five. I'm Patrick already hit on a couple of them, but she'll get that last. It's please. Yep. So what, you know, if you look at here, um, the multifamily residential district with the U D O allows up to twenty-three different uses, up to twenty-three. Or actually, in our condition with this rezoning case, we're, uh, limiting that to nine for MR one and only five for MR two. Second part of this is we're limiting the density. So you can see here in Patrick's, which this is a condition, we're limited to four to one units per acre in this red area, this the MR one and only two dwell units per acre in the in the yellow. And I know we mentioned some previous rezonings we've had with Chatham Park with the Milotti and Grantham. Those were looking at, uh, you know, anywhere from, uh, six to up to twenty-one units per acre. So this is not, you know, we're not, this is not the same zoning as far as the same zoning class, but we are restricting the, uh, the density to only two and four here. Um, twenty-foot type-C buffer perimeter buffer. So we came in with our original submitted and we're proposing a twenty-foot type-C buffer, showing on green on the perimeter here. Um, if you look at the town's U D O, there's no perimeter buffer required because it's light uses, but we have, we are implementing that as condition as the twenty-foot perimeter type, uh, C. Uh, Patrick's already mentioned, also mentioned this, as you can see on this exhibit, it is a condition, we are doubling the riparian buffers for these two primary streams that run through the site. Um, a fifty-foot require, we're proposing a hundred-foot on each side. Um, then, if you can see just to the south of here, we're proposing a thirty-foot streetscape along Chatham Parkway. So I know Mr. Baker talking about the traffic on my here Pittsburgh road, eventually in the, you know, traffic on this road here. We are proposing a thirty-foot streetscape along that. So you're not having lots back right up to that D M T right away. Um, and then finally, as far as connectivity, I mean, there were some questions, what the community meetings about connections to current road uses, um, in in Rock Springs Road. Um, that is, you know, again, back to my point, and the key, the reason I started off talking about China Parkway is that connection is gonna be key in terms of that and the, you know, the D M T project getting China Parkway to this property. So that is key. So it's not an intention to connect the hard road or use Rock Springs as the primary access. You know, once this goes, this is a rezoning. This is not a site subdivision plan. Once it goes through the town staff or subdivision plan, then they will look at that, look fire and everything else. So we actually, uh, after the second community meeting, we made it, we had a condition that no connection, we would not make a connection, hard road unless staff, you know, was thought, made that a requirement. Um, be glad to answer any questions.
Oh, remember questions? Um, yes. Yeah, Robbie, uh, I couldn't see the acreage on MR one.
Acreage is ninety-two point four acres.
So I'm, no, I'm retired. My math is getting kind of rusty, but you've got three hundred and seventy units at a maximum four for ninety acres. Okay, never mind. That was my, that was a math there.
Making me nervous, Carl.
I told you how old you're tied.
I did look at that today, but.
The acreage on on MR two?
Thirty-six point one.
Okay, thank you.
That one's easy.
Any other questions from the board? Danny?
Uh, for Robbie, you said that this is either only or primarily gonna be accessed off of Chatham Parkway, the proposed Chatham Parkway? Because you showed the arrows off of Rock Springs.
Yeah, if you look at that, I'm saying potential vehicle access
Okay.
on the errors. And we want to show that. And that was really what you need. We did not, I mean, we're saying potential access there. What we're saying, what we're committing to is the one on China Parkway.
Molly, any, uh, public comments, John?
Nope.
Public comments?
There was, there was a comment made earlier tonight. I forget what the situation was, but it was sort of a negative connotation on dead-end roads. So there's three dead-end roads that touch this this property. And and to me, that, those are a beautiful thing. They, you know, those people are there because peace and quiet and so forth. And so there's, to me, there's a a very inherent benefit to that for those residents, which, uh, there's quite a few, yeah, keep on scrolling, uh, let me scroll on. There's, uh, you know, there's a handful off of off of Rock Springs, not, there's not too many, maybe a dozen in in Oldham's, but off of, uh, Hearn. There was, yeah, there was a good hand, there was a good handful in there. So, uh, it was only in the last handful of minutes I understood that this was not gonna be a high-density, high-density thing. Uh, now, are there, are there roads proposed, Robbie, other than, could you take me back through the roads?
Which ones?
What what's gonna be proposed to serve this rezone?
Yeah. Carl, we've not even really started looking at engineering layouts on this. Uh, we got, you know, we, of course, we got to look at streams first and figure out where everything's at, but there will be, we will have to make a stream connection to the north into the yellow from Chatham uh, or from that future residential collector over there.
Yeah.
Um, so we know that there will have to be a connection made across that stream. I personally, I mean, this is getting, I'm gonna have a staff and once we submit a subdivision plan, but, you know, I think there will be, when we need to have some type of emergency, give you access to Rock Springs Road, you know, whether it's gated or not. Uh, but we will have to make a stream crossing at least one. And I think we would probably limited on the one through the south. I think that would be access from Chatham Park. I would not propose right now, don't anticipate being a stream, uh, crossing right there. There will be access back to the east. So I would say it would be one stream crossing.
Could you zoom out a little bit more, Janie, please? Okay. So is, uh, the Rock Springs Road, uh, do you foresee that being extended, uh, into the pink, into the MR one zone?
Uh, uh, do not, other than that error there, there you see. Again, that may be a, you know, emergency or secondary access out to Rock Springs. Uh, but if you see how we're doing the buffer, we're proposing a thirty-foot, I mean, a twenty, uh, was it, you know, twenty-foot perimeter buffer along Rock Springs. So we're not proposing that to be like the frontage of this development. And, you know, and I know some of the neighbors, well, you had two neighborhood meetings, they were concerned with that. They seemed to be okay when they heard that. But, you know, as we're showing it now, we're showing that, uh, committing to a perimeter buffer there. So if we have anything, it'd be, again, those two errors, that's the reason we put it there. It just said potential access there. And that's it.
Yeah, I I admit I was I was not for this when it was, when I, when I understood it to be a very high-density thing, but I like the gradation that they're offering up to you know, whatever is out there right now. So I'm a lot more, I guess, neutral towards it than what I was.
Looks to the pleasure of the board, will entertain a motion to approve or to deny or to table. Let's go to the budget. You already moved to approve. Is there a second?
How second?
Three seconds? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. So Carl Shaver is in the opposition and this passes. That's PB twenty-three three-ten, the Oldham conditional zoning request. Moving now to planning department updates. Not too much to say. Looking forward to seeing, uh, re-farm back next month. And don't forget, we'll have our tattooing amendment hopefully on the on the docket as well. And that makes a segue into a board comment period. Uh, Ray Carney has done free extensive research on the, uh, the history behind the downtown overlay district, which, uh, forbids tax and parlors. And, uh, Randy, do you want to say anything about that?
He, Eric, when I come to, either all of minutes, the town board meeting, reference to how they go, they came about and why, and who the title of town I mentioned to there, people have to be offering and so on. So.
Maybe Steve can put these documents. Ray has all the links and they keep them up.
I mean, it's up to y'all, whether you want to read them or
Right.
or whatever.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah. Yeah, the second.
Thanks, Steve. Oh, yeah.
If you were all here.
I know I was here. But they had a, um, you do presentation.
Who do you?
All right. By the Lawrence Group. Was anybody on the board at that time? The Lawrence Group, my understanding, K L, K L, or K L parade.
Is that what they're talking about?
Yeah. Or to review the cause and effects of Chatham Park passing down to Pittsburgh. And we're addressing a lot of the issues the last few board meetings. So if you go onto the Pittsburgh website, look at the Lawrence Group presentation. I think it's worthwhile. They're telling you what's coming, what you need to do. If they would have acted at the time they should have acted, probably would have a couple of messages that would guide me to the past. My third comment that, I can't remember which meeting we had and talked about traffic. I think I was like the person thinking mostly about the traffic.
Right.
And at that time, whether I'm accurate or not, I learned that the uh, DOT for North Carolina does not affect the side roads. It's only for the main, I reason. And they were going to investigate that. I don't think anything has happened. I have not heard a word. So what, the reason I'm bringing this up, I try not to cuss. It's one of my peeves.
Yeah.
But I was cussing before I came here tonight. It's moving up the road.
You can talk about the, uh, around the, uh, circle and, uh,
Well, you can already get a, we turn one, the turn left.
Yeah.
And it was mine. And I'm seeing it every, exactly, it's growing and growing and growing and growing.
Right.
So I don't know, you know, I wanted to get that out before
Sure.
the mayor left, but I guess we didn't get into it at the time.
She can watch the recording.
Tonight. We came in two thousand and twelve, my wife and I, and fell in love with Pittsburgh. And about two thousand and fourteen, we found out about Chatham Park. And through that process of Chatham Park, all we heard was keep the character of Pittsburgh, keep the character of Pittsburgh. Well, when I drive around Pittsburgh anymore and I get out away from the small town, I don't see any character of Pittsburgh. It's changing. I mean, if you drive down sixty-four at the way Channel County line, look at them apartment houses and buildings and stuff that's going in there. That's not Pittsburgh. And it's coming our way. So I just wanted to make sure I brought them four points up tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other board comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
Second, and Carl, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Have we, we've been, anybody?
Very interesting.